Good afternoon, everybody. This meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees is now called to order. Let me ask everybody to take a moment to mute your cellphones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream. On Monday, January 27, 2020, the Board held a public hearing at Lehman College. Trustee Henry Berger chaired the meeting. Trustee Una Clark and University Faculty Senate Chair and Trustee Martin Burke joined trustee Berger. Lehman College President Dr. Daniel Lemons also attended the meeting. Twenty-seven speakers signed up to speak and 15 speakers testified. Students and professors from various colleges testified regarding the Starbucks lease at Hunter College. Their hearing began with a statement from the Hunter College Dean of Student Affairs explaining the decision to lease space to Starbucks. She indicated that the space on 67th Street and Lexington Avenue has traditionally been used as a retail space and in response to students' feedback during a campus-wide master planning project, Hunter searched for a group that could provide another food option, student jobs, and seating and meeting space for students. Starbucks was the only viable offer and only bid the college received. The dean also indicated that Hunter would be working with Starbucks to hire students and increase the seating area as well as to collaborate with the college on scholarships and food pantry donations. The dean also announced that a food pantry will be opened at the 68th Street in early February. The remaining speakers opposed the Starbucks lease citing lack of student involvement and determining usage for the space, suggesting it can be better used as a student art gallery or a food pantry. Students were also opposed to the terms of the lease agreement and the presence of a corporate entity on campus. Additionally, while not present at the hearing, the president of Hunter's student government submitted testimony in support or not in opposition of the Starbucks lease. I am also delighted to welcome our new general counsel and senior vice chancellor for legal affairs Derrick Davis. And believe it or not, this is his first day, and I can't imagine a better way to start than with a board meeting. We all look forward to working with you in support of the university Derrick. And let me say thank you to Pam Silverblatt for really carrying us through a tough time and pitching in over the last year as the interim counsel. Thank you Pam. Thank you. Before I turn to the chancellor for comments, let me thank my fellow trustees for all their time and dedication to the numerous presidential searches that they are participating in, including three new searches being launched this month for a total of six active searches. I know for some of you it feels like a full-time job, but it is about the future of our system and about the future of CUNY and our schools. And there is nothing better that you can do than participate in this. So let me thank each and every one of you. It is one of the most important tasks of a trustee, and again, I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the City University of New York. Let me now ask Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for comments.
I thank you Chair Thompson, trustees, presidents, and vice chancellors. It's great to be back here with you today, and it's great to hit the ground running with so much good news to start the spring semester. I also want to welcome our new general counsel Derrick Davis. It's good to have you here Derrick. And I think to show our new senior vice chancellor a bit about the special community he has joined, I wanted to share a brief clip. The following is an excerpt of a spot produced by our Office of Student Affairs to be shown during open houses and orientations. I think it succinctly and importantly captures the essence of this great university, so I'd like to show it to you now. Please.
Aristotle once said that the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. What makes us so? It's when you arrive at a place that reminds you of home, when we discover that your greatest strengths are overcoming your challenges, and when every day brings you closer to recognizing the person you are meant to be. It is the fight-free quality, the ability to bring people together through leadership, humor, and grace, and the power to know that when you pursue your dreams, you inspire others to reach theirs. It starts when a civic leader believes that quality education must be accessible for all. The whole is greater when its parts rise in peace, and justice follows the pursuit of the masses. It is one life saved through the care of many, finally enlightened within the finite, and becoming a leader by following the guidance of others. The whole is greater when we gather together to celebrate victories, break down barriers, and scatter more frontiers. We are invisible when we transform the invisible, redesign the invisible, and realize that education is invaluable. We by the City University of New York, and we are one.
And we are proud because of the tuition increases.
So yes, thank you to the Office of Student Affairs for that incredible video. Tomorrow, I will travel to Albany to give my first budget testimony before a joint session of state lawmakers. When Governor Cuomo unveiled his executive budget last month, we were pleased to learn of his proposal to raise the income eligibility cap for the Excelsior Scholarship and to expand access to middle-class families. We're also grateful for the governor's pledge to make more community college students eligible for SNAP benefits, a critical component in the effort to combat student food insecurity. Additionally, Governor Cuomo's two-to-one capital matching program for new construction and major restorations would greatly aid CUNY's ongoing infrastructure investment. We're also pleased that the city's proposed spending plan for fiscal 2021 issued by the mayor last month provides funding for increased mandatory costs as well as sustained support for CUNY's capital program. We'll continue to work with the mayor's office and the city council on CUNY's funding needs before the budget is adopted in June. We also have good news from the city, which continues its phased rollout of the Fair Fairs program. As you know, part of our mission is to provide an affordable, accessible education to all New Yorkers, and I am pleased to report that to date, almost 12,000 CUNY students are receiving half-price Metro cards through a collaboration between CUNY and the New York City Human Resources Administration. The open enrollment period started last Monday, and we're utilizing our social media platform as part of a CUNY-wide campaign to increase awareness and encourage all students who qualify for this benefit to take advantage of it. These 12,000 students join the 25,000 ASAP students and the 1,000 government community college students who currently receive free Metro cards as part of their CUNY education, for a total of 38,000 students CUNY-wide. During my first year as chancellor, I have emphasized the important goal of increasing the university's engagement with minority and women-owned businesses and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. After confering with the CUNY Board of Trustees and the senior team, we established and implemented a set of clear-cut targets and policies to meet this goal. It is a little bit early to share the numbers, but I am pleased to report to the board that by the midpoint of the fiscal year, we have already surpassed last year's total spending at the senior colleges, and we're just about to do the same at our community colleges. Overall, our four-year and community colleges have already outspent last year's total. This was accomplished with the support of our campus president, so kudos to all of you for the work that you have done, and is a testament to our commitment to promote real diversity across every corner of the university and to provide equal access to our business partners. This is a great outcome, and we should all be very, very proud. Our schools continue to garner praise for their ability to serve students of diverse backgrounds, including working adults. CUNY Schools of Professional Studies, which counts more than 3,700 adults in its degree programs, was again ranked in the top 5% of the U.S. and Newsweek Reports Best Online Bachelor's Degree Programs for 2020, marking the sixth year in a row that the school has been highly ranked by this publication. The report, published last month, placed CUNY SPS 16th in the nation and 12th on the list of best online bachelor's degree programs. I also have good news to share about a pair of groundbreaking CUNY programs, the Women in Technology and Entrepreneurship in New York Initiative, known as Whitney, and ASAP. Whitney, which propels women and underrepresented groups to careers in tech, will be replicated in Chicago and two other cities thanks to a $50 million investment from Pivotal Ventures and Melinda Gates Company. This program is in partnership with Cardinal Tech and was developed at CUNY under the leadership of interim vice chancellor for University Advancement Andrea Shapiro-Davis, so kudos to Andrea. Since the launch of Whitney in 2016, the number of women who graduate from CUNY with a bachelor's degree in computer science has risen by 94%. So we are excited to see the program slated for adoption in other cities. It has also been a super month for ASAP, CUNY's proven effective model for increasing timely graduation among associate degree students, and has also become a proven model that has been successfully replicated in other systems across the country. Last week, an evaluation conducted by the nonprofit MDRC, research firm, showed that three community colleges in Ohio nearly doubled their three-year graduation rates and charted a 50% increase in students transferring to four-year colleges. Earlier in the month, the Community and Technical College System of West Virginia announced a $4.2 million grant award from Arnold Ventures to pilot a program based on ASAP on two campuses there and eventually to expand it statewide. When programs that originate here at CUNY can achieve such an outstanding result for students and that of other systems, it helps to burnish CUNY's credential as an innovator in higher education. I want to talk about something that is in all of our minds. The health and safety of our students, faculty, and staff remain our highest priority, and CUNY is closely monitoring reports involving the outbreak of the 2019 coronavirus. Executive Vice Chancellor Cruz issued an advisory last week to all deans and campus presidents, and I sent a university-wide memo providing general precautionary information. We are thankful for the leadership of the governor and the city health authorities in keeping us informed and able to provide the most up-to-date information on the coronavirus to ensure the safety of our community. CUNY has established a record of action in support of communities that have been affected by natural disasters. Even if they continue to rebound from the damage of Hurricane Maria, the people of Puerto Rico are again confronted by the devastation and fear brought on by a succession of earthquakes and aftershocks since late December. Thanks to a resolution from the CUNY Board of Trustees passed during the 2017 hurricane season, students from the island who relocate to New York City and have been impacted can enroll in our schools and pay in-state tuition rates. We have launched a page on the university's website that contains information and details our efforts. The page includes a list of local organizations and aid groups that continue to support communities in the impacted areas, and as always, CUNY is ready to support the people of Puerto Rico in conjunction with the efforts from the governor and the mayor in any way as the difficulties continue in the island. We pride ourselves in our ability to reach out to others, but CUNY also benefits from the generosity of organizations whose support enables us to extend important programs and services to our students, advancing our community as a whole. Last month, the Andrew W. Mellon Foundation awarded our Graduate Center a second $3.15 million grant that will fund the expansion of the CUNY Humanities Alliance to include BMCC, Government Community College, and Ostos. These schools will join LaGuardia Community College in engaging doctoral students to promote humanities education at community colleges. One of the bedrock tenets of CUNY's mission is to extend educational opportunities to underrepresented groups, and that is the primary goal of the Ascensium Education Group's $5 million commitment to fund a new initiative to increase access to high-quality post-secondary educational opportunities in prisons. In December, CUNY was named as one of only three recipients of a grant that would allow our Institute for State and Local Governance to work with the State Department of Corrections to coordinate and align the educational offerings of 47 colleges and vocational programs operating across 30 prisons. CUNY is also playing a key role in the Census 2020 effort, one of the most critically important efforts of our time. I had the pleasure of attending and participating in the governor's press conference at the Graduate Center on January 23 to kick off the state's campaign to make sure every New Yorker is counted. And in collaboration with the city council and NYC Census, we are helping to administer the funds that are going to hundreds of community-based organizations and training a team of around 230 students as part of the CUNY Census Corps for Census Engagement and Mobilization. For our students who represent the full range of New York City's diversity, this is sure to be a formative experience. CUNY schools are also hosting their own activities, rallies, and seminars to help ensure an accurate count so our city and state can get access to the fund which we are entitled. As you know, we are conducting periodic presidential evaluations mandated by our Board of Trustees' guidelines, using the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, known as ASQ, as our independent consultants. We have begun the process at New York City Tech, Hunter, the College of Staten Island, and mega Everest. Each of these campuses' communities has been sent a request for feedback via a survey. And to update you, the chair mentioned the many searches that we have ongoing. We're very close to selecting a new leader for Baruch College and getting close on the Queens College and the CUNY Graduate Center searches. And the search process has begun for BMCC and LaGuardia Community College. This morning, we kicked off the process for Queens Borough Community College also. Finally, we are fortunate at CUNY to have so many dedicated public servants, and it's hard to find someone more committed to the principle of expanding access to higher education than our very own senior university dean for academic affairs, John Mogolescu. In his 33 years at CUNY Central, John has overseen the implementation of some of our most innovative initiatives. John announced today that he's stepping down from that post effective March 27. But don't say goodbye yet. Fortunately for us, he's staying on as the founding dean of CUNY SPS, which has established as the go-to place for online degree programs and a place that meets the educational needs of working adults and employers. We have all benefited and have been enriched by his contributions, and we are grateful that he will continue to play a key role. So John, we salute your unwavering commitment and your vast contributions to the CUNY family. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Chair, I conclude my report.
Thank you chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Item number one, approval of minutes of the board meeting and executive session of December 16, 2019. I'd like to move that item. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Let me call on Committee on Fiscal Affairs Chair Fernando Ferreira to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on January 13 and considered the following matters at its meeting, which I now present to the board. Item 2A is a resolution requesting the Board of Trustees authorize a contract with the American Museum of Natural History on behalf of the CUNY School of Professional Studies for the purpose of providing online science courses. Through this existing partnership, 13 graduate-level online science courses are offered to students at SPS. The term of the contract will be for five years, and the estimated value of the contract will not exceed $2.5 million. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2A for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, item 2B is a resolution requesting Board of Trustees authorize the ability to waive tuition and fees for the pre-selected college credit course enrollments of non-degree students participating in the Math Start ASAP program for the spring 2020 semester. Bronx Community College and Kingsborough Community College will continue the pilot program, and Queensborough Community College will be added. The total number of students served for spring 2020 will be approximately 175. The estimated waived tuition at three colleges is $463,750. Mr. Chairman, I present item 2B for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Yes, yes, Mr. Hunter.
I know that when we first bought this item for the initial vote when it was 100 students, we had kind of talked about the Math Start program, ASAP program, and how beneficial they are for our CUNY students. My question is, I guess, why was it Kingsborough specifically that was added those 25 students? And I guess the expansion, I completely understand, I think is a great program, and I'm glad that we're combining the two. But also in terms of the students, are they all continuing in the program? Did students drop out, or did anything else happen? Is there any assessment on that?
These are new students that will be participating in the program. The expansion to these two particular community colleges is based on needs assessments that have been made by our Office of Student Affairs, student success programs, and so we are very hopeful that they will continue to provide our students the same outcomes that they have traditionally been provided. Assessment is built in from the beginning of the program, so that data will be available in short order.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself from item 2C.
Thank you trustee Ferreira. I'll present item 2C. Item 2C is a resolution requesting that the Board of Trustees authorize a contract with Crown Castle Fiber to provide dark fiber services for a maximum of 10 years at an overall cost not to exceed $15,614,400, which includes a one-time initial build spend of $2.1 million and a monthly recurring cost of $112,620. This proposed 10-year agreement with Crown Castle Fiber will allow for continuing service as well as improve the overall resilience of the dark fiber networks by providing a second path for the dark fiber to enter into each CUNY location. I present item 2C for the board's consideration. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Any questions? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With one abstention, that item is approved. One recusal.
Recusal.
Excuse me. That item is approved.
And Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report from FSA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number three, Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. Let me call on Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research Chair Jill O'Donnell-Torme to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research considered the following matters at its meeting on December 16, 2019, which I will now present to the board. Item 3A, Borough of Manhattan Community College AS in Public and Nonprofit Administration. In response to demand for improved business and finance skills in the nonprofit sector, the Associate of Science in Public and Nonprofit Administration, ASPNA, degree at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, will provide students with hands-on training and hard skills as well as practical understandings of human resource management, organization performance, research methods, and data interpretation. ASPNA will also prepare students to develop, evaluate, and advocate for public policies promoting the mission and the goals of public and nonprofits with a focus on equity and inclusion. The program will prepare students to transfer into a four-year program to complete their BS degree in public affairs or nonprofit administration. The cost of the ASPAN program will be minimal and not require additional expenses related to facilities or equipment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3B, the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism, MA in News Innovation and Leadership. Due to expressed and growing demand from legacy media companies as well as media startups for innovative leaders who rise to the unique challenges presented by the struggling media market, the Masters of Arts in News Innovation and Leadership will prepare graduates through courses focused on the most pressing skills related to the field. The program will train students in business strategy, diversity strategies, change management, product management, and development revenue strategies, audience development, and customer-centricity, and will be modeled on Newmark's 2019 non-credit program with similar content and classes. The Newmark Graduate School of Journalism is uniquely situated to answer the demand for such a credit-bearing program as the school operates in the heart of the media, business, and technology in New York City and can call upon executives as faculty. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second? Discussion on this item? Any questions? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3C, John Jay College of Criminal Justice, closing of the Department of Health and Physical Education. John Jay College of Criminal Justice has requested the closure of its Department of Health and Physical Education as the department has no full-time faculty with no plans to add full-time faculty and oversees only one minor degree. Following consultation with its faculty, the Department of Counseling and Human Services has agreed to manage the current Department of HPE course offerings and to welcome the Department of HPE part-time faculty to its department. The Department of HPE has not admitted new students in the HPE minor since 2017, and students currently enrolled in this minor will be able to complete the minor under the Department of Counseling and Human Services. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3D, as you know, routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research in summary form. The CAPRA dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data and use the dashboard's tools and filters to explore each month's submission. A few highlights from this month's dashboard include the creation of four new concentrations, seven new undergraduate policies, three new graduate policies, and the classification of 14 new general education courses at 11 colleges. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3D for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Yes.
I would just like, on behalf of the faculty, to thank the Office of Academic Affairs and especially the executive vice chancellor for expanding access to the CAPRA dashboard with a goal for full transparency for the entire university community. Thank you.
Thank you trustee. Any other comments? All of those in favor? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Item number four, Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Let me call on the Vice Chair of the Committee, Ken Sunshine, to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chair, the Board Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on January 13th, 2020, which I shall now present to the board. Item 4A, FSA Committee Report. This month's report, we had 65 employee and faculty actions, including 51 appointments and reappointments, and 10 faculty fellowship leaves. Mr. Chair, I present item 4A for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Items 4B through 4G are namings made in accordance with the university's naming policy. They are Helen Frankenfeller Fellowship Fund at the Graduate Center of CUNY, the Jeanette Burcovich Coin Group Study Room at Hunter College, the Cooperman Challenge at Hunter College, the Cooperman Dress for Success Program at Hunter College, the Joan G. Maskett and Sherman Pinkus High Bar at Hunter, the Joanna and Bridget Brady Excellence in Nursing Endowment at Queensborough Community College. Mr. Chair, I present items 4B through 4G for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on those items? All of those in favor? Opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Items 4H through 4J are academic appointments with early tenure. The academic appointments with early tenure are Miguel Aragon at the College of Staten Island, Sean Edgcombe at the College of Staten Island, David Schwab at the Graduate Center. I would like to make a motion to amend these resolutions as follows. In the resolved paragraph, the effective date should read September 1, 2020 rather than February 4, 2020. And rather than waiving Bylaw 6.2B, the language should read with an application of Bylaw 6.2C2. Is there a second for the amendments?
Second. Any discussion on the amendment? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Resolutions are amended.
Mr. Chair, I present items 4H through 4J as amendment for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those items? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items are approved.
Item 4K is the appointment with immediate tenure. Tamara R. Schneider at Baruch College, who will be placed on leave while she serves as Associate Vice Chancellor and Vice Provost for Research at the City University of New York. Mr. Chair, I present item 4K for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4L is an executive-level appointment. It is Lester Elgado Sandres Repalo as Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs at Bronx Community College. Mr. Chair, I present item 4L for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Item number five, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me call on Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Chair Brian Overfeld to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its meeting on January 31st, pardon me, January 13th, 2020, which I now present to the board. Item 5A, Baruch College, upgrade of fire alarm system for the vertical campus building. This resolution is requesting the City University Construction Fund provide funding for upgrading the fire alarm system at Baruch College's vertical campus building for an amount not to exceed $5 million. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5B, Baruch College, replacement of chillers and related work. This resolution is requesting the City University Construction Fund to provide funding for the replacement of chillers and related work at Baruch College's information technology building for an amount not to exceed $5 million. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5B for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5C, CUNY Graduate School and University Center Common Element Capitals Project. This resolution is requesting the City University Construction Fund to provide funding for the university's share of the Common Element Capital Project at CUNY Graduate School and University Centered Building for an amount not to exceed $1,750,000. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 5D, Hunter College, new lease with Starbucks. This resolution is requesting authorization for the university's general counsel to execute a lease for a Starbucks coffee shop at Hunter's College West Building. Mr. Chairman, I present item 5D for the board's consideration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the item? Mr. Hunter?
Oh, sure.
And you know something, before that, President Rab is here. President Rab, could you please address the item briefly?
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity and thank you for the committee's support. As you know, this space that's in question was built as a retail space and has been consistently in use as a retail space at Hunter College, providing a retail option and also support for the college. The opportunity that CUNY provided when it went to an online system for books allowed us to create an entrepreneurial relationship with the bookstore across the street, Shakespeare as our brick-and-mortar bookstore, thus requiring us not, no longer to need a bookstore in this prime space right on Lexington Avenue. We approached CUNY and with the Central Office's support, had a retail broker to find us the best options. And we made clear to the broker that we preferred to have an option that followed the strategic plan developed by the entire community, which one of Jack's was to have additional seating for our students and for our community. Starbucks provides this extra seating. It also provides something very important that's needed for the college at this time, which is estimated income of $400,000, which we will be able to use to support scholarships, operations, and additional renovations. We have and are very mindful of the need for renovated student space. With the board and the CUNY central support, we opened a $5 million student center just a few months ago, which was a combination of CUNY, student government, and philanthropic support. We have our first social space as well as additional renovated club space there. Last month, the board approved a naming resolution for a philanthropic gift for an arts hub where we hang student arts and provide students with internships and free tickets. We run four galleries at Hunter College with hundreds of thousands of dollars of philanthropic support for student art. And of course, we have done $30 million of library renovations over four floors and are hoping to launch the fifth floor library very soon with the support of Vice Chancellor Lou. So we are moving ahead with that. For these reasons, and after consultation, the undergraduate student government at Hunter College did not oppose this project, and in which we've discussed them. I also want to make, I want to respond to something that trustee Hunter mentioned at the board meeting and want to make sure that it is on the record. Starbucks will be offering our students jobs and opportunities. They're also offering an opportunity for our students to display their art on their walls, which is unusual in a franchise. And finally, the request was made that Hunter add a second food pantry, which we are doing. We'll be opening this Wednesday on our main campus. Both food pantries will be open five days a week, supporting our students. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on this project.
Thank you, President Rab. Trustee Hunter?
Yeah, so I think that, you know, I first want to like try to make a motion to table this item for a later board meeting. Because I think that right now isn't, like I think there needs to be a little bit more clear communication with the Hunter students. So I'd like to make a motion to table it.
There is a motion that has been made by trustee Hunter to table the item. Is there a second for that?
I second it.
Motion, discussion on that? Those in favor of tabling? Those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Trustee Hunter, that motion fails.
So would I be able to explain my, back to comments on the item? So I'll be voting no on this item, only due to the fact that, you know, I think that, you know, a lot of students at Hunter are very upset with the, I guess, the developments of this and how, I guess, the communications have gone through. I feel like it shouldn't take me as a board member to inform people what's going on on their campus. There should already be clear communications happening with those students and those student government members. Again, I think that as a board, we follow policy and procedure, and I think that our local campuses should do the same. I think a consultation process with students is necessary in anything that this university does because we serve the students, you know? This university is, you know, I think, giving a lot of people an opportunity for social upward mobility, and it's important that we have more conversations around that. I think that, you know, President Rab has highlighted some of my concerns that I had in the committee meeting, talking about food insecurity initiatives, and I'm glad to hear that the food pantry is going to be up this Wednesday. I'd love to be there, but I'll be in Albany at the time, so I'll definitely see if we can send someone up there to be there for it. And I think that, I hope this isn't something that just fades into the dark like a lot of our other initiatives that are, you know, created by students. Because I think that we would be wrong as a board to dismiss that these, like, I guess, developments haven't, would never have happened if these students haven't been coming out to show support. I think that the pressure that the students put on people is super important, and, you know, we have to continue to have that pressure. So President Rab, I'm looking forward to seeing that food pantry up and running, and I'm looking forward to, you know, your continued support and communication with the students at large at Hunter. And I'm also looking forward to seeing that fifth floor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Other comments on the item? Yes, trustee.
Specifically to the chancellor, in light of the controversy over this particular initiative and the university's plans for developing public-private partnerships across the university, it may well be worth making sure that student voices on every campus are brought in early in that process so that consultation replaces conferenciation.
Absolutely. Thank you. Other comments?
I just had a question.
Yes.
So is there, is there an opportunity for Starbucks to also somehow provide their food for the food pantry that might be happening? Is that something that's been discussed?
We actually have asked them, and there is, and they have agreed that they will provide the food pantry with whatever is acceptable to the, under food pantry rules, which are broader than the sell-by date. So we've asked them and they've agreed to that.
And they've agreed to that.
And thank you for raising that.
Yes, trustee. Yes, trustee Clark.
I would just like to explain to the students and everyone present that when I was in the city council, we voted on public-private partnerships because not-for-profits were not getting enough money, and we allowed them to start programs like this as public-private partnership. The only thing that I am concerned about is how it was explained on campus and why the students are, were not all informed of this new Starbucks on campus and have that heard. So, so although I will vote for it because I believe in the public-private partnership because money does not always come to the institutions, and we want to make sure that there is funding that students can benefit from, we may also ask Starbucks, can they give scholarships? As an institution and as a corporation, can they add some scholarships to the program?
If I may, I may speak to that. We also have asked them, we haven't had much progress on the scholarships, but we're working on that. And we have been working with our student government, understand the repositioning of this, what has been traditionally, as I said, been a retail space.
Other comments? Yes, yes, trustee.
I don't think that, if I'm not mistaken, this isn't the actual, like, contract yet, right? This is just the board authorizing it happening?
This is approval.
It's approval of the lease. Okay, so in terms of the, I just want to make sure in terms of the job situation for those students, like, will Starbucks be the one that's like negotiating that? I just want to just like get some clarification.
It's a private company, but we have asked them, they've agreed to have a job spare, and they are, they are very interested and made a commitment to hire students. So we don't have an exact number.
So there's nothing on concrete?
No, they would, no. But there, but there is a commitment that they would like to have the students. There's a very, there's a commitment that they want student art. There's a commitment to do, to support the food pantry.
And this is, and just one thing, one item of clarification, this is the authorization to conduct the lease? Is that what?
This lease has been negotiated as before you for.
Okay.
And we are, we do, this is a very strong estimate of $400,000 of extra revenue to Hunter College every year, which will go back into supporting our operations.
Other comments on this? All right. It's before us for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Opposed. The item is approved.
People over profit. People over profit. People over profit. Students over profit.
That concludes your, concludes my report. Okay. Let me, okay. Let me, let me call on Committee on Student Affairs and Special Program Chair Una Clark to present the committee report. Excuse.
People over profit. People over profit. Students over Starbucks. People over profit. Students over Starbucks. People over profit. Students over Starbucks. People over profit. Met on January 13th, 2020.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to ask everybody to quiet down, please? Or I'm gonna have to ask those who would disrupt the meeting to please leave.
People over profit. Students over Starbucks. People over profit. Students over Starbucks. People over profit. Students over Starbucks. People over profit. People over profit.
Trustee Clark?
Mr. Chairman, the Board.
I'm sorry, you're not allowed to, sir, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to do that to meeting. Good, trustee Clark.
Jose Luis Cruz provided a report to the committee that outlined some of the organizational alignment work underway in the Office of Academic Affairs, including decision to unify the Office of Student Affairs and the Office of Enrollment Management, and the plan to launch the search for a Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs and Enrollment Management early this year. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report.
Okay. Thank you, trustee. Let me also report that the Subcommittee on Investment met on January 13th, 2020 to review the investment pool performance with our investment advisor, Makita Fiduchari Management. I now move that this, oh, let me now move that this meeting convene an executive session pursuant to Section 105, Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law to discuss meeting of matters pertaining to investigations of personnel. Do I have a second?
Yes, you do.
Those in favor? We are in executive session. Thank you all. Do I have a second? Thank you. We are back in public session. Let me now ask the secretary to present item number six.
Item number six is a resolution to appoint S. David Wu as president at Baruch College, whereas S. David Wu, PhD, is currently serving as the provost and executive vice president of George Mason University, a Carnegie Tier One research institution and the largest, most diverse public university in Virginia. And whereas, as George Mason's university provost, Dr. Wu is responsible for faculty in three Northern Virginia campuses and a global campus in South Korea, and 82 undergraduate degrees and 129 graduate and law degrees in 10 colleges and schools. And whereas during Dr. Wu's tenure as provost, George Mason University experienced the fastest enrollment growth in Virginia, increased student diversity and academic outcomes, and became the youngest institution to receive Carnegie Tier One research designation. And whereas Dr. Wu implemented at George Mason an incentive-based university budget system. And whereas Dr. Wu implemented at George Mason an incentive-based university budget system that stimulates strategic investments for academic innovation, he planned the launch for the first college of public health in Virginia and a new school of computing. Dr. Liu led the creation of the Institute for Bio-Health Innovation, the Institute for Sustainable Earth, and attracted a U.S. Department of Homeland Security Center for Excellence to George Mason. Since his appointment, the sponsored awards for research, scholarship, and creative work increased by nearly eighty percent. And whereas as dean of the Rosin College of Engineering and Applied Science, and holder of the Lee A. Iacocca Endowed Chair at Lehigh University from two thousand and four to two thousand and fourteen, Dr. Wu led a period of unprecedented expansion and renewal for the Rosin College by recruiting almost half of the tenure-track faculty, helping to create over twelve interdisciplinary programs, growing undergraduate enrollment by thirty-five percent and graduate enrollment by sixty-five percent, and expanding substantial instructional and laboratory space. And whereas the Rosin College of Engineering and Applied Science, sorry, at the Rosin College of Engineering and Applied Science, Dr. Wu led a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar fundraising campaign, developed and implemented the college's bold strategic plan elevating engineering excellence via multidisciplinary innovation, which set clear directions to reinvent and reinvigorate Lehigh's longstanding academic strengths to create strategic focus in health and healthcare, energy and infrastructure, and computing and data analytics. And whereas Dr. Wu is an accomplished scholar in systems engineering and operations research, specializing in optimization, game theory, and distributed decision-making. He has received significant support for his research from the National Science Foundation, the Department of Defense, and Sandia National Laboratories. Dr. Wu's work in data analytics has been widely recognized and cited, including Best Paper Awards finalist for the two thousand and nine Daniel H. Wagner Prize for Excellence in Operations Research Practice and in media coverage. And whereas Dr. Wu has a BS in Industrial Engineering from Tung Hau University and an MS and PhD in Industrial Engineering from the Pennsylvania State University. And whereas a search committee chaired by trustee Barry Schwartz conducted a nationwide search and recommended Dr. Wu as one of the finalists for the presidency of Baruch College. And whereas after consultation with various Baruch stakeholders, the chancellor is recommending Dr. Wu as Baruch's president. And whereas in accordance with the executive compensation plan approved by the Board of Trustees on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, the chancellor may, in exceptional circumstances, make offers beyond the maximum of the salary range, subject to the approval of the Board of Trustees. And whereas Section 6.2B of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that a distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of associate professor or the title of professor who had tenure in another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the Board in its discretion. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of S. David Wu as president of Baruch College effective July first, two thousand and twenty, and an annual salary of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, and be further resolved that the Board of Trustees and the City University of New York approve the appointment of S. David Wu as a full professor with tenure at the Baruch College Zicklin School of Business, effective July first, two thousand and twenty, and placed on leave while he serves as president of Baruch College. The explanation reads as follows: Dr. Wu's accomplishments, experience, and education make him particularly suited for this leadership role at Baruch. The chancellor strongly recommends his appointment in the exceptional circumstances of the salary.
I'd like to move item number six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Comment? Discussion?
If I may, extremely excited about this appointment of Dr. Wu, someone who has an incredible trajectory of scholarship, a trajectory of investing and promoting and transforming the research potential of the institution that he's been associated with, particularly George Mason, another public institution like the City University of New York. Someone who is deeply committed to the vision and the mission of enhancing social economic mobility and transformation through quality education, someone who's very dedicated to students. All the stakeholders throughout the process praise him. All the references spoke of a man of integrity, of vision, committed to public higher education. So I couldn't think of someone better to work on the great work that Mitch Wallenstein has done over at Baruch. Want to thank all the search committee members, particularly trustee Schwartz, Linares Garcia, and Schoder, for their work in this. And this is the first appointment that I get to make, the first recommendation I get to do as chancellor to the Board, and I couldn't think of somebody who embodies excellent scholarship, commitment to public higher education, and all the values that we hold dear better than Dr. Wu. So extremely excited to make this recommendation to the Board.
Other comments on this? Item is before us, all of those?
I'll simply say, we set this an executive committee session. The search committee was unanimous with regard to Dr. Wu. When you look at this resolution, you'll see this is a demonstrated, a proven leader and scholar. And having the benefit of talking to the chancellor as he went through the decision-making process, this is the first of what will be, as you all know, many, many appointments to our schools as president. His thoughtfulness, his care, his very incisive questions, both of, I know you, Dr. Wu, and certainly of me on behalf of the committee, were instructive and, I think, said to me then, and I'll tell you, we are in very good hands with our chancellor in terms of all these decisions that have to be made. And let me just say, I'd like to thank Dolly Martinez and Mahalat Sagai, who are involved in every single search. For their efforts here and their efforts with all the other searches that are ongoing. And Dr. Wu, good luck to you, and please, welcome, welcome.
Thank you. No, I just wanted to also add Anna Padilla, who's been on the search committee, so we want to recognize her as well. That's all.
I didn't see her back there, so I didn't mention her. All right, we have a resolution before us that has been nominated and seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Sir, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, yes, I do. I normally don't speak from a script, but they told me I have three minutes, so I don't, I don't read from the script, I may take thirty minutes. So I will read from my prepared statement, and I'm really deeply honored and absolutely thrilled and humbled to be chosen as the eighth president of Baruch College. I'm proud to join the City University of New York, the most successful and high-performing urban university in the world. I am grateful for President Wallenstein's outstanding leadership over the past decade and bringing Baruch to national prominence. I am currently provost and executive vice president of George Mason University, and that's located just outside of Washington, D.C. And very similar to CUNY, Mason serves a large and diverse student population. As provost, I focus much of my attention on realizing the vision for access to excellence. And before Mason, I spent more than a decade as dean of the engineering school at Lehigh University. I am also a longstanding board member of the Thayer School at the Dartmouth College. Baruch is one of the most impressive and compelling institutions I have encountered in my thirty-three years of academic career. Not only does it serve as an agent for social mobility, Baruch also is one of the most selective and highest-quality institutions in the nation. You may have seen the recent Forbes article, which placed Baruch number one among elite colleges you can actually afford. I think that says it all. The combination of achieving academic excellence at the highest level, while being the most effective agent for social mobility, in my view, not only make Baruch a prime example for the founding vision of the CUNY system, but make Baruch a model for public higher education. It is my belief that institutions like Baruch and CUNY not just keep pace with top institutions in the country, they will set the pace for the future of American higher education. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I was trained as a systems engineer, and I'm fascinated by complex systems such as big cities and universities. I am an immigrant, born and raised in Taiwan. My wife and I came to the United States as international students. I have never, I never would have imagined that thirty-seven years after, I would become the president of a major academic institution. And none of this would be possible without public higher education. I am immensely grateful for this opportunity and your trust in me to lead Baruch College to its next chapter. As the chancellor told me when I accepted his offer, my charge is to take Baruch to the next level of recognition, excellence, and achievements, and I promise that I will do that in a fashion that not only elevate Baruch, but all the institutions in the CUNY system. And thank you so very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Chair, I just want to thank the members of the Board for this sort of confidence by accepting my recommendation for the most outstanding and qualified leader that we could identify to lead Baruch, and also for making history by having the appointment of the first Asian-American history, Asian-American president in the history of CUNY. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you all so much. Congratulations, Mr. President.